Um, I think he's an employee, but that we do have interns that come from mainly MSU. That sometimes works in here, but not always. Hello.
Sorry for my late arrival, gentlemen.
You're right on time, actually.
Okay, good. We have Phil and Monique tonight, or just the four of us?
Just the four.
Okay. Yes. Sure.
Because I'm from Flint, I have to ask, are you related to the mentors who had grocery stores there?
Um, not that I'm aware of, but it it is, and it depends on where they're from. Because my, um, family is Lebanese, so so they may.
The mentors and the Lebanese.
It's very common, but that doesn't mean they might not be distant relatives. Yeah, yeah. It's nice to hear, though.
A branch of Baker family on Facebook.
Oh, yeah.
They were descended from Charles, and I'm descended from Tom. They were all.
Isn't it interesting how that works out?
And there was a few in the eighteen hundreds.
Yeah.
And they didn't talk to each other. We don't know what it was about, but I went to meet them last.
It's very funny how those things end up working out. Relatives you never knew existed. Keith, can I trouble you for the wifi for the for the?
Um, we went through this last time.
Meridian guess.
Yeah.
Capital Meridian and.
Meridian guess capital and an exclamation point. Okay.
They just changed it.
I got I got a new computer, so I know that's gonna ask me. Thank you for your patience. As soon as I get this up, I will begin our meeting. Pretty speedy today is not the day. Well, it is in front of me, so I am going ahead. Go ahead and wait for. Cannot connect. That's just what I thought would happen.
We'll move in.
Yeah, come on over. All right, while my computer is deciding to take its time here, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at six thirty-three. I will start with a roll call vote. If you'd like to say, uh, well, I'll I'll go through it. How about that? Member Bennett.
Yeah.
And Vice Chair Koenig.
Present.
Member Tzizeis.
Present.
And Chairman Sora is present. This meeting is now called to order. Good evening and welcome to the Charter Township of Meridian zoning board of appeals meeting. Today is Wednesday, December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. It is six thirty-three, and we are gonna get right to business with the approval of tonight's agenda.
I move approval of the proposed agenda.
Okay, approve, uh, motion to approve from Member Tzizeis.
Second by.
Seconded by Member Bennett. This is a vote to approve the agenda for this evening. Member Bennett.
Uh, yes.
Vice Chair Koenig.
Yes.
Member Tzizeis.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so tonight's agenda has been approved. And next on our agenda, it looks like, is approval of the minutes from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll defer to you guys, because you all were present at that meeting. Anybody wanna?
I move to approve the proposed minutes from the November fifteenth.
Great.
ZVA meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from November fifteenth.
Second by motion.
Seconded by Member Bennett. And any corrections or any note, anything of note? I didn't see anything, but I was here, so great. On that note, this is a vote to approve the minutes from November fifteenth. Member Bennett.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Koenig.
Yes.
And Member Tzizeis.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so those those minutes have been approved. Item number four is communications, of which we did have two come in post-agenda. Um, do you want to address those, Mr. Chapman, or wait until just acknowledge, we can acknowledge that they came in?
Yeah, we can just.
Okay. On that note, we will move into new business, which brings us to ZVA case number twenty-three dash eleven. Seven one five Red Cedar, Julia McKenzie. That's, uh, address on record, seven one five Red Cedar Road, Oakland, Michigan, four eight eight six four. Go ahead, Mr. Chapman.
Okay, um, so the applicant's requesting a variance from section eighty-six, three sixty-eight D two, uh, minimum lot width of two hundred feet. Um, this variance is requested to create two new parcels that are under the minimum lot width of two hundred feet at seven fifteen Red Cedar Road. Uh, the parcel is approximately three point seven three acres in size and is zoned RR rural residential. Uh, the submitted site plan shows a, uh, fifteen hundred eighty-two square foot bi-level single-family home that was constructed in nineteen fifty-eight. Um, the zoning ordinance requires a minimum lot width of two hundred feet, and the submitted plan shows, uh, two lots, one with a width of a hundred and twenty eight feet and one with a width of seventy-two feet. So, um, the applicant is requesting a one hundred and twenty-eight foot variance and a seventy-two foot variance for the creation of the two lots.
Okay. Would the applicant or a representative for the applicant like to speak on this, uh, this variance? Um, and if so, I would love for you to come on up to the podium here, and you can state your name and address for the public record.
Hi, I'm Julia McKenzie, and, um, I would like to split my lot into two separate parcels.
And, Nancy, will you just by saying your, um, your address for the public?
Oh, it's seven one five Red Cedar Road.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, I'm asking to split my lot into two parcels. Uh, they would both be very large, and it would be in generally in, uh, tune with the rest of the area, and I think that it wouldn't impact negatively on the area. And it would, uh, it, this variance would, uh, allow me to overcome the practical difficulty that was created by the sort of winding nature of the Red Cedar River at that point. Um, I guess that's about it.
Okay. Uh, I would say we will likely have questions for you when we get into our board time.
Okay.
Um, so don't go too far. We will likely call you back up.
All right. Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak on this case? I will open the floor for public comment. Yep, going up. Just state your name and, uh, address for the public record, please.
My name is Frederick Baker. Uh, I'm an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of the Schwendener family. Uh, the three brothers succeeded to ownership of the adjacent Schwendener parcel on Veneta Road. Um, this year, when their father, Ben Schwendener, passed away. And I believe it's held by a family trust at this point, in which they each have an equal voice. Paul Schwendener is here with me, one of the brothers. Uh, and I'm here to speak, uh, on their behalf in opposition to the parcel split and variance that's being proposed. Um, uh, because, uh, the applicant has not, and and I I hasten to say, Ms. McKenzie is a lovely woman. I spoke to her briefly, uh, this evening. Um, and I I hate to gore her ox, but, um, as an attorney, I have to point out that the standards under the ordinance are not satisfied by this application. A dimensional variance, uh, requires a showing of practical difficulty. Practical difficulty refers to practical difficulty in using the lot and making use of it in the ways permitted by the ordinance. The lot is already being used in a manner permitted by the ordinance. It has a residence on it with a two-hundred-foot frontage. And with that satisfies all of the, uh, uh, square footage, uh, area, frontage requirements under the ordinance. What's really being proposed here is amounts to spot zoning. Um, Ms. McKenzie has submitted an application not really for a variance, so much as as for rezoning of her parcel to permit two residences with less than, both of which would have less than the frontage or required, or the width required under the ordinance. Um, I've left at each place, and I also sent earlier today, uh, which Mr. Chapman said he had conveyed to you uh, by email, uh, a memorandum that outlines this, applying both the, uh, definitions of practical uh, difficulties and, um, the criteria used in passing on a request for a variance. It's organized in that way, uh, using the ordinance as, uh, sort of an ordering device. Um, and I don't want to just repeat everything that's in that memo, but I would like to, um, uh, point out that, um, the ordinance requires a two-hundred-foot minimum width for a reason. It also requires a minimum area, which appears to be satisfied, uh, by the proposal. Uh, and those reasons have to do with the maintaining the the character of the neighborhood. A low, uh, a high density, uh, would result from this variance, and the neighborhood is intended to be, um, low-density, and low-density for a reason. Um, it's for, uh, family, uh, residential use. And, um, it is also, uh, under the ordinance, uh, especially along the banks of the Red Cedar and the floodplain, uh, that is part of these, a lot that's, uh, under consideration here, uh, which is unbuildable. Uh, i- it's to minimize the need for public services and the expense of of water and sewer and so forth. And and it's planned and zoned for use, uh, in a way that would involve the, uh, use of wells, potable water, and septic systems for disposal of waste. And when you start concentrating, um, more residences on smaller lots, you run into problems, uh, on both of those fronts, particularly when the property is, uh, for the most part, unbuildable. If you look at exhibit, um, I believe it's, um, A, the one with blue, you you'll see outlined in that blue, the Red Cedar River. You'll also see that the property under consideration, the white lines here, is more than half floodplain. It's subject to flooding every spring. That ground becomes saturated. Now, the the developable part of the of the property, which comprises the the two parts separated by an orange line under exhibit A, um, is at most half, and probably a little less than half of the total acreage. So there is no practical difficulty here, and there is a risk. If you set a precedent by allowing the division of this lot, that every other lot along there, all of which you can see, uh, comprises both buildable higher acreage and a large percentage, a large area that is floodplain. You're going to run into the very problem that the ordinance is designed to prevent, and that is high-density development that overtaxes the perccable part of the parcel and creates a risk of seepage, pollution from, uh, septic systems, and, uh, problems with potable water, uh, that could result from that. The zoning here is appropriate for the use that's permitted, and, um, there are no, you, there's no unique circumstance here under the ordinance. This is just.
Sir, I'm gonna stop you there, just so that we can start getting into our board time. We usually have have our public comment a little bit more. But I I, while I very much appreciate the exhibits here, because I think the visuals do assist us in coming to those conclusions, I would like the board to be able to talk through some of those items that you mentioned, whether it be.
If you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Just repeat your name for me, sir, one last thing.
I'm sorry.
Your name, sir.
Baker.
Baker. That's easy. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker. I do appreciate the packet and, um, that you came you came this evening to speak. If you want to have a seat, we are gonna go ahead and get into our board time unless, sir, are you, would you like to speak this evening, or he's he's here on your behalf?
Why don't you continue your conversation?
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll we'll get into our board time, because we'll discuss some of the things that you brought up, so that we can, um, kind of make some some determinations ourselves here. So we will close public comment and get into our board time. Any questions, comments, concerns, thoughts?
I know I have a couple of questions, but I'm I'm curious, um, I believe it was in the applicant's materials where she did state that a lot of these, um, lots in that area were under that that threshold, that minimum. So I'm I'm curious about that, and that's something that I was, um, thinking about both when when both, um, people were speaking. And looking through the materials and through this, like, supplementary packet, but I I admit I got through part of it today, but I didn't get through all the exhibits today, so there's quite, there's quite a bit there. Um, however, I am looking a little bit more towards those, um, that practical difficulty and minimum action, because that seems to be where we tend to, um, spend a lot of discussion time. So I welcome any thoughts on those two, um, that anyone may have. Yes, Member Tzizeis.
Yeah, I looked at the, uh, the lot drawings that Mr. Baker provided, and there are a number of building sites, uh, lots that do not comply with the two-hundred-foot frontage.
Right.
But I believe the ordinance was passed in nineteen seventy-four, and those houses predate, and those lots predate the zoning code. Is.
Did that sound about right?
Am I correct?
Um, I can't say definitively. The problem is here is there's not platted lots, so it wasn't like a subdivision was put in, so there meets and bounds. So it's kind of hard to say when they were actually created.
Okay.
Um, and also, our records dating back then, because it was likely prior to nineteen fifty-eight.
Right.
Are not good at all, so.
And that's in particular to this, the these that that kind of back up to Red Cedar, like that?
Yeah.
Those, okay. That that all look to me to be very interesting-shaped lots, to say the least. I don't know if interesting. It's like puzzle pieces over there back by the river. Yeah, I do, uh, I do see that. Okay. Any other thoughts?
I can see the, um, the unique circumstances, just because of what you're just saying about the plot shapes and sizes.
Yeah.
Um, and as for using it for permitted use, I think that, yes, there's already a residence on it. But I think I can see that, because splitting your plot and doing whatever you want with it, I can see that being a permitted use with your land. So I can kind of see that, um, criteria.
Yes, Member Tzizeis.
I guess I would disagree with that. Um, the zoning allows for the construction of a single home, which they have in order to split this lot. Neither of the lots will comply with the zoning ordinance, and I believe Mr. Baker is is correct that this is more akin to a rezoning and up-rezoning than it is to a, uh, dealing with an anomaly of the lot. They can do what the the code provides, and changing the code is not a zoning variance. That's a amended zoning act.
Though we have, as a board, split parcels.
We have.
Previously, that, under those unique circumstances, if we can meet that criteria. Um, I I cautious to use the word rezoning when we do talk about variances, because we do have that function as a board to be able to offer those variances as they exist in those u- unique circumstances, obviously meeting our criteria. But that said, um, I I do, we we often talk about this, and it's and it's tricky to, we don't have a ZVA crystal ball to be able to say, what, well, if we approve this, we're gonna instantly, I mean, look at, we say that every time we have a Lake Lansing, uh, case, but we don't, we don't, you know, we don't, we don't know what will happen with the other, um, four or five parcels right here in this in this area. But I do want us to try and focus on this one, and whether or not we are seeing those practical difficulties. I would love, um, Mrs. McKenzie, would you like to come up to, um, talk a little bit? Because I would, I would like to hear about the practical difficulties about building on this on this site, and why this particular split is why why this variance is required. Like, what, can you can you talk to us about those practical difficulties in building on this lot the way it is now?
Sure, yeah. Um, the unusual shape of the lot really is what presents the practical difficulties, because it makes for a very narrow road frontage. Um, even though it's a very large lot, and there's plentiful space to have two dwellings there with regard to the required square footage, um, just due to the nature of the shape of the lot, that, uh, road frontage is is, uh, too narrow.
But wouldn't the road frontage be even more narrow if it was two lots?
Right. I I guess I'm trying to explain why, uh, the shape of the lot is creating practical difficulties.
Okay. I'm still not.
I guess my comment there is it's not the shape of the lot that creates the practical difficulty, it's the fact that it's zoned for one house per lot in a two-hundred-foot minimum width. Um, that's been true since the house was built, presumably.
Right, okay. Yeah. Does that kind of? How how Member Tzizeis, uh, worded it, make?
Yeah, I I take that point. I just think that, um, the spirit of the idea of having these road frontages doesn't necessarily take into account this type of a of a topography where it's winding and against the river, and, you know, the idea would be to have ample space for every home to be in line with the rest of the neighborhood. So, um, I guess just the unusual shape would make it a candidate for a variance.
Um, Keith, would you mind pulling up on, um, on the screen, like, slide number thirteen? Or page number thirteen in that presentation?
Oh, yeah.
I just want to see, so that this is the proposed build. Oh, maybe it's, yeah, thirteenth, there we go. This is the proposed build, so this would be the proposed two lots. So your home potentially would be, is this a new home being built on that?
No.
Parcel, or that's the existing?
That's the existing home.
Okay. And is the idea then that you split these two lots, this existing building goes away, and you build on either one of these? Or where you, where where where's your home going to be in this property?
Um, remain in the home that we are in.
Okay, so this this would remain?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so this, I think this, we've run into this problem before. Whatever may happen to this secondary lot is not the focus of the variance, so that we can't focus on that.
Speculate on what's gonna be built there.
On that. However, Member Bennett, do you want to add something?
Oh, no.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were gonna, I was like, go for it. But, um, so so it it's feels to me that we have to focus kind of on that on this division, and whether or not this division is necessary. And if it, if it, if the, if the home exists on this part of the parcel as is, and it's going to stay as is, what is the, what is the need to split the lot? Because it it, you just have an extra parcel of land. You just have more land.
Right. I I'm intending to sell that other portion if I'm able to get this variance, and I don't know, um, how, I don't want to overshare, but, um, yeah, I've recently been through a divorce, and I'm trying to buy out my former husband by by doing this, so that me and my kids can stay in the house.
Hey, I feel you, because I just went through this exact same thing.
Okay.
Um, yeah, okay, that, it does, it does highlight some of the, some of the interests. The the unfortunate part is, for us, that doesn't, as a board, constitute a practical difficulty that I can see. So that's where, that the the practical difficulty of splitting the lot is wherein, is where I'm struggling. Not because I don't understand that, I absolutely one thousand percent do, but that's where I'm, that's where I'm still struggling, guys. Shall we look at criteria? All right.
Yeah.
Let's go to criteria number one, and say that unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure, that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created. I can, I can meet that, yeah.
I was gonna say, um, it's a very broad statement, very subjective when you look at it.
Yeah.
But just reading it for what it is, uh, I would agree to that. I think looking at the lot, the way it's shaped, and as Mr. Baker even stated up there and showed the picture, that, you know, more than half this lot is essentially in a floodplain or a wetland.
Right.
So they're forced to basically build everything up toward the road instead of in the back. So I I think that's kind of a there's other properties along Red Cedar Road that are unique and have the same situation, but overall, when you look at the township overall, even the area, even the RR zone that's in this area of the township, and the river only runs through a certain part of that. So I think
Exactly.
the the unique circumstances that are peculiar are peculiar to peculiar.
That's a fun word.
Hard to say that word, are peculiar to.
Yes.
Um, really, those properties that border that river. So I would say, um, just on the basis of the way this criteria is stated, I I can see that being met.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree with that sentiment.
And the river obviously didn't self-create the parcels. It was probably there a long time before the parcels.
That is right. And the applicant didn't create those issues either, because that house has been there for a while, right? Uh, criteria number two would be strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. And I would, this is the one that I struggle with, because the home is existing, there's no challenge with that. This, you know, the permitted purpose would be to have a a home, and as Member Tzizeis pointed out, it's a zone for one residence on this, on this, um, in this area. So that is where I'm having a hard time coming up to the practical difficulties.
Right. That's what I was, uh, touching on earlier, too, and I guess in my mind, I was trying to reach that, um,
Yeah.
that criteria. And so I was thinking another permitted use of a, you know,
Yeah.
property is to sell it and do.
Be able to sell it if you.
Do what you want with it, but I do see what you're talking about, how the main purpose of a residential property is to put a residence on it, so.
To have a residence to live. Yeah. Um, I think where where the even just putting a pin in in. a pin in, in criteria number two, going into criteria number three, where granting that variance is the minimum action necessary, which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. That is, that is the tricky part for me because what ends up happening then is that we're creating a very small parcel with that 72-foot frontage versus keeping within that zoning ordinance. And going forward, this variance stays with that. So the, these parcels, I mean, yes, they could, they could be joined again, but that creates a non-conforming building site for any potential
Actually creates two.
It creates two, that's, that's correct. It would create two non-conforming parcels, which then gets into anything that happens on that lot then needs to, needs to have a variance. Yes, member Kenick?
Regarding number three, this is another one of those criteria that, you know, people have heard for years and is, it's up for interpretation, I guess is the easy way. I know Mr. Chapman probably doesn't want to hear that, but depending on how you see the situation, it could be interpreted different ways. I see it as when, when someone's asking for a variance, I'm looking and going, are they asking for the minimum variance that would satisfy what they're requesting? So if technically they can get away with a 10-foot variance and they're asking for a 20-foot, to me, I'm going, you're not asking for the minimum variance. Minimum variance would be a 10-foot instead of a 20-foot, and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
So for me, looking at the variance, the variance is asking for a reduction in the lot of the width, the width of the lots based on creating another parcel. So whether it's 72, 128, 129, 71, 100, 100, I don't think that really in my eyes makes a difference as far as what the minimum is. The whole point is there's gonna be a reduction in the overall minimum lot of 200, just based on the type of requirements that's being asked, which is a split of the lot. So this one is, is kind of a, in my eyes, in just my opinion, is kind of a strange criteria for this type of request because
It's hard to
anything could be considered in my eyes could be considered a minimum variance.
Yeah, it's hard to see minimum with, with, yeah, 200 feet. Like you said, splitting it up in either, in any configuration is still, yeah.
Right. I would tend to agree with that, because I was actually thinking the same thing, that there's, there really isn't a minimum.
Yeah, the minimum is hard to, to easily, easily define 200, 200-foot frontage.
And I know these were, you know, these are used in a lot of different municipalities and even the state law. I think, state law that has these
Yes.
in there. And it's, some of these are just very subjective on the way they're stated and the way they're viewed case by case, as much as, you know, that could be arbitrary and capricious sometimes case by case, but that's just the nature of the beast with look at these. So in my eyes, I, I see this as, this could be argued as a minimum variance
Yeah.
for what's being requested. I know we skipped number two.
No, I, I just
I'm speaking on number three.
We're just gonna come back to number two. We're gonna, we're gonna see if we can create. So I, what I hear is that you're saying that you could meet criteria number three as being minimum because it's hard to quantify what minimum would be with a 200-foot.
Leaving all things else still to be considered, yes.
Okay. I think I could follow along that train of thought.
I agree.
Anything else?
The other thing is, this is a rather significant variance.
Well, that, okay, so, so be that
It is, it may be the minimum, but it is also a significant variance over
I would agree.
current zoning and it also, there is nothing in the current zoning that prevents her from complying with it and building a house. There is a house there. So I don't know. As you say, we can't look at what might happen to the second lot, but
Right.
practically, that's what they're trying to do. So.
I would agree with his statement.
Now, the question is, would that apply to criteria four, which is granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or essential character in the vicinity of the property? Or would it, would it apply to criteria five, which is granting the variance will be generally consistent with public interest and the purposes intended of this chapter?
Those are the two that I struggled with a lot because, like, like Mr. Baker was saying, it is just kind of the, that area is just very secluded, you know, setback, very low density, residential rural. So I think that would not quite consist with the overall goal of that neighborhood.
Yes, member.
Yeah, I think Mr. Baker also raised an important issue with regard to the wetlands and the surrounding areas and the river in that if this was to be developed as a separate building site, this is not within the public utilities boundary, so there would not be water or sewage and the impact of another septic system. And we haven't even discussed where the septic may be on the existing lot and whether it, I don't see it here.
I see a wall.
I see the wall.
There's a wall.
The wall.
Yeah, there's a wall. Yeah.
But I don't see, and it's just, I don't see any indication of where the septic system may be and whether it may already intrude on that other proposed lot. But I think there is a significant, or there is a substantial risk to the wetlands by developing another lot in this area.
I can agree with that.
Another thing to mention, we did get a letter from one of the neighbors that points out this is a private road.
Mm-hmm.
Finding it was, was interesting. I drove out there and it's a, it's a very rough drive and drive. So while a, driving into the first lot in may not create a lot of traffic throughout the developed area, it does increase the traffic on that piece of road.
Yes, member Kenick, go ahead.
But this one, I think, this is, I hate to keep sounding like a broken record, but to me, the word adversely is what I'm sticking with is, you know, anybody can say that any change on a piece of property could have an effect. It's just, you know, this says will not adversely affect. And I'm sure the way it is right now, the gentleman, whoever that, might even be yourself, sir, whoever lives on the property just to the west of it, that long sneaky looking thing.
Yeah, I think that's theirs. Yeah.
May I see a response?
That's up to the chair.
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind coming up to the podium, though, we don't have your name and address on the public record, please, sir.
Yes, my name is Paul Schwendener, 4084 Van Ader Road. And just in responding to what you mentioned and also the fourth criteria regarding the impact on the environment and the other, the neighbors and so forth, I was the person, or have been the person who has been in contact with nearly all of the neighbors in the area, spoken to them either by phone or in person, making them aware of this hearing, sharing the proposal that was submitted. And as you can see from the submitted petitions, 15 people have signed from various properties who were, wanted to have their names there. Of the other people I spoke to, I have not found a single person who was in favor of it. In fact, the existence of no, no other people supporting that variance probably speaks to that rather eloquently. Some people may have chosen not to sign the petition for various reasons known to them, but having heard firsthand, I believe the entire neighborhood is quite alarmed at the idea that this established coding, which is so clearly done and which this variance does not conform to, that that could be changed in this sort of way. And they are worried about seeing further subdivisions happening in various things. Some, I heard often the comments saying, I moved out here precisely because I like property to, you know, have this more space and more nature. So I should think, I wanted to share that with you because I had heard it firsthand myself over the last couple of weeks.
Thank you for sharing that. Go ahead, member Kenick.
So I will, not a comment for the property owner, but as he was saying, and thank you for verifying that you heard the property just to the west of there. I'm sure there was, there is a definition in the zoning code for adjacent. Most municipalities have a definition for adjacent. I'd be surprised if they don't, but if he keeps looking, I'm not sure if they do. But however
So loose interpretation of adjacent?
I think it does have
Adjacent, yeah, it's typically
Okay, there is a
specifically direct to or across, like you crossed a right of way or across the easement directly to it. So it's, it's very specific in that sense that will not adversely affect adjacent. Or the essential character, to me, the essential character is, you know, for all intensive purposes. And I'm not making a motion or voting on this, but for all intensive purposes, if this board were to approve this, I'm gonna probably guess that if somebody buys this property 99 times out of 10, it's gonna be a single-family home that's gonna go there, even though there's a slew of other permitted uses in the code that they could put there and buy right. But they probably have a lot of backlash because all the other place, all the other properties around it are all single-family homes. So more than likely, a single-family home would be built there. Would that be essentially out of character with the vicinity of the property? In my eyes, probably not, because it's a single-family home that's consistent with other single-family homes in the area. However, I do think whether something is adversely affected is debatable. Because if there's another single-family home there
Yep.
I was gonna say, the neighbor living right next door, as of right now, there's a pretty good setback between probably your home and this home, as far as footage, as far, how far away that you away from that, build another home there, that setback now gets diminished. There's probably some trees that are probably torn down, there's gonna be some potential noise if they build a deck or have a pool or something out there. So it may adversely affect that neighbor, but may not adversely affect another adjacent neighbor. So it's another one of those wishy-washy kind of criteria that unfortunately, you know, on a case-by-case basis, that's, it's, it's difficult sometimes to determine. But that's how I, I kind of view it, is that I wouldn't necessarily foresee the essential character being diminished, because that's probably more or less, I can't speculate, I don't know for sure. I mean, I think you can even put a golf course on this, on a residential, residential. Not saying one's gonna be there, there's no property, but that's a permitted use, I believe, there. But more than likely, a single-family home would be there. And I think that would remain with the character of, of the properties, but it's just how well it actually impacts other adjacent properties that, that is debatable.
Yeah. Yeah, I definitely, I definitely hear that thought process and agree with the essential character in the, in the vicinity, as in the neighborhood, would adversely affect is where, we're talking about environmental impact or, you know, septic well impact of this second, second lot. That's where
And at this point, we truly don't know, because nothing's been proposed for the property.
And there's no, right, right.
It'd be different to put a single-family house there with a, with a home occupation, where you got two or three truck drivers coming and going versus somebody who lives there as a single-family home.
And
Two different, two different uses, but they're both permitted on the property.
They're both permitted, but then the question remains again, since that, that is not and cannot be the focus of this variance, is that right now it is just strictly about, is splitting this parcel, will splitting this parcel adversely affect the adjacent land or essential character? That's the question. Yes, member Kenick?
My, my, just my opinion, I'm not speaking for the rest of the board. My opinion is that it, it would have an effect, but would it have an adversely effect? I would, just based on the split, I would say no.
Yeah.
But I would, I definitely think it would have an effect, absolutely.
Yeah.
But an adversely, just using the term adversely effect, I would say no.
Yeah. I would, I would agree with that with, based on the split. And, and again, the, the challenge for us is that we, if we're looking and narrowing it down strictly to the splitting of the two lots, without taking out any speculation as to what's gonna happen on the second lot, would it adversely affect anybody, this particular variance? And I can meet that criteria. I do not believe it would adversely affect to split the lots.
The only thing I would say is, if it is split, whatever it's used for is still gonna have a well and a septic and so
If it's, if it's built upon.
If it's built upon, if it's not, there's no reason to split it.
Well, but that's, that's the part that
That we can't, yeah.
That we can't judge it on. Because unfortunately, we don't, we're, we're looking at just strictly on the split and not, we, we, we understand and know that likely selling that parcel will result in a build of some kind, because it's very unlikely that somebody would buy a parcel of land and not want to build on it.
But if we're, if we can't discuss that, or that can't be it, then there is no reason for the split.
Well, and that goes back to practical difficulty.
Right. Well, as practical difficulty is, I think the unique nature of this property is that it is so large compared to other properties in there and that they've built on one side of it. And so the rest is vacant at this point. But
And I could, I could even meet practical difficulty in a, in a stretch to meet the practical difficulty, being that it is hard to maintain a large property when your home is on one very, very side end of it and, you know, you have a, you have a larger space that is not built upon. I, it's, it's a stretch to get there, but I can get there. So I'm, I'm, you know, like
Yep.
stretching, but I still
Would it be possible
It's tricky. Mr. Baker, come on up. Just, just so that we can have you on the, on the recording for the, for the minutes for the meeting.
If you would, turn to page seven of the memorandum that I prepared. I've heard discussion of practical difficulty that doesn't conform to what the ordinance requires. The ordinance speaks of practical difficulty solely and only in terms of whether there is some practical difficulty in making use of the parcel as it is zoned and in accordance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The applicant has shown no practical difficulty whatsoever. The, the parcel is being used as permitted under the zoning. And I would, first of all, point, in addition, point out that the, the split is only, it can only possibly be for a residential build. A trucking or a golf course or any of the other uses that I've heard mentioned are not permitted uses in a residential RR zone. It's a residential zone and only, the only use that can be made of a parcel that is proposed to be split is for another residence. And that takes us right to the portions of the ordinance that are on page seven. "In consideration of the excessive cost of extending water and sewage service to all areas of the township, the establishment of a zoning district in which spacious lots are required makes it reasonably possible to obtain a continuous supply of safe potable water on the immediate property and to treat sewage by septic tank, followed by the disposal of the effluent on the same property." The applicant has not even shown that, as has been observed, that the septic field for the existing house does not, is not in part of the parcel that's proposed to be split. But even if it is, the point of having a requirement of a large parcel, and remember, what you're looking at here, the floodplain comes right up to the foot of the existing building. If you look at exhibit A, I believe it is, you'll find, if you look at exhibit A, all that blue comes right up to the foot of the building there. So what you're, what you're talking about in permitting a variance is defeating the purpose of the ordinance was to, which is to ensure that there will be a large lot that can accommodate the septic discharge from the existing use on that parcel. The second
Mr. Baker, hold on, I'm gonna pause you there, because I'm looking at that exhibit
Uh-huh.
and I'm also seeing the lot next on the, on the opposite side of that. I'm seeing also, if I look at our packet and I'm looking at
Do you mean this lot to the
Yes, to, what would be to the
West, or east, excuse me.
East of
Yes.
of the parcel in, yes.
And once again
And I'm see, I mean, I guess you're, you're making an argument that is also applicable to many of the other lots that are already built upon and lived, lived in on this, on this road. So I, I, it's, I, I hear you. I hear the argument, I really do. However, I think that that's just as applicable to your client's property as it is to anywhere else.
It is, and that's the point. They are all required to be large to accommodate the, the fact that they're never gonna be, and they're not intended to be, public services extended, that this is an area in which septic and well will be the norm.
But we're, we're having, I think, we're having a difference of, of understanding on what large constitutes, because I'm looking at these plot lines and I'm seeing very different shapes and different shapes and sizes of what could constitute large. The one all the way to the east, that's, that's a very long skinny lot.
That's not pictured. There's only one to the east.
We're looking, we're looking up at.
Oh, okay, yes.
I mean, that's, is that a large lot? I mean, this, again, like Member Koenig said, this is, this is kind of a.
How is that, how is that?
Question.
I'm sorry, how is that map we're in?
What lots are.
This is north.
North is up.
North is, north is where the RR is on that map. Your clients, your client.
East of the one that's exhibiting.
The south there on this, on this map, and, and I, I mean, I'm, I'm really, like, if I'm, if I'm looking and comparing the Ms. McKenzie's lot to the one that's all the way to the east in this plot map, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing a large difference in size as far as what's constituted as large. I can see your client's lot in particular is quite large, and they want to keep it quite large, and I, I see that. However, I don't think that that is, is comparing them is not making the case for me.
The lot further to the east that you're referring to.
Yes.
This narrow one, and I, let me.
Yeah.
Just to be sure, you're telling me that this one here?
Yeah, blue one.
The one that's highlighted.
Was planted, or divided by meets and bounds at a time before there was, it couldn't have been made that size if it hadn't happened before the ordinance was adopted. It wouldn't have been approved as a parcel split.
I, I, Mr. Baker, you can understand that the position that we're in, is that we are looking, like I was talking with Member Trezis, and we are, we are in, in.
The idea.
The idea of the zoning board is to be able to, to look at these cases in particular, and see if they are unique and qualify for some kind of a relief from that ordinance.
And to do that, there has to be a practical difficulty fund.
Yep.
Now, the existence, the existence, the existence of a lot that predates the ordinance and the 200-foot frontage requirement does not mean that the ordinance can now be subverted by granting a variance that allows a parcel split that undercuts the large lot goal.
That is true, but that does give us an opportunity to say, is that work for every, every parcel here? So that is, that's, that's what we're, that's where we're at now, is does, does this, does that still apply? Does that still work? How does, how do we apply that ordinance and still allow residents to have a chance to?
And, and.
Do what they will with their property.
But under the ordinance, they do not have, an owner does not have the right to do what they will with the ordinance, they have to comply with the ordinance.
Right, but.
Unless there's a practical difficulty.
Mr. Baker, that is, yes, we are, we are in agreement, there needs to be practical difficulty, but that's why we're here. We're arguing semantics about, we're already here. So we already know that this ordinance was not satisfied by her trying to split the lots, which is why she needs a variance, which is why she's here. So we're back to just.
Practical difficulty means that you can't use the, the property in accordance with the requirements of the ordinance. There has been no showing that the applicant cannot use the property in accordance with the requirements of the ordinance without a variance. Therefore, the inquiry stops.
Mr. Baker, we've discussed this, and you've heard us, we've discussed that we're having a challenge meeting practical difficulties, but arguing with me about it, about what constitutes a practical difficulty, is frustrating and not very helpful, as far as us coming to a conclusion as a board. Yes, Member Koenig.
Ms. Chair, I would recommend, keeping the comments that Mr. Baker had mentioned, I would recommend we move on to criteria number five, and then we'll come back to criteria number two, maybe we can take those into consideration.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Just for the sake of time and.
Exactly. So I will go back to, I, I do think that I am able to satisfy criteria number four. I know that seemed to be a little bit more challenging for some of our other board members, but I, I could satisfy criteria number four. Criteria number five is that the variance will be generally consistent with public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. And that is where, you know, that is, that is the question. Is this consistent with the public interest? Is this consistent with what the ordinance is trying to, trying to assist with, and trying to, you know, make sure that it is staying consistent with what Merton Township would like for this RR zone? Is it consistent? Is it, are we making this exception because there is good cause and is necessary?
I would venture to say no for that one, especially considering everything that we've heard and all the signed petitions, that, I mean, the main purpose of this area is to be rural and spread out and secluded, and I think that this would only create a higher density area. And obviously, we can't, you know, like I said, look in the future and look at, you know, what will happen in the future if we do grant this variance, but I just don't think it's in the spirit of the zone, what it was proposed for.
Yeah, that's a tricky one.
I'd agree with that statement, but I also go back to number two, that there is no reason for this variance, that there's nothing that prevents her from dealing with her property under the current zoning as it is. What we're doing is creating another lot that will be a non-conforming, two non-conforming uses.
Yep.
Which doesn't seem to be what the purpose of the ZDA is to do. We can grant variances where it's necessary in order to use, utilize the lot current, under the current zoning because of anomalies at the property. But I don't think we can change, I, I don't believe we should be granting variances which are not necessary to allow the property owner to comply with the current zoning ordinance.
I think that was very well pointed. Thank you. That's, that's a nice word, Member Koenig.
If we're, if we're moving to criteria two, which is.
Because it seems like, yeah, and it seems like I'm, I'm having a challenge meeting number five.
I was, I was kind of, yeah, leaning toward back and forth with number five and kind of separating on number two as well. And I can agree with, I almost forgot your name for a minute, gosh, Member Trezis, sorry, I apologize.
It's all right.
So many people I see every day. And I do agree with Mr. Baker's interpretation of practical difficulties, that the way this is written, it essentially says that there has to be some sort of difficulty that a property owner has with the current property itself, that won't necessarily allows them to use, because the term using is in there, allow their use that they are by right allowed to have on there from existing. And I do agree with Member Trezis and with Mr. Baker, that I don't believe that is the case. I believe there is a use that is on the property, there is a single-family home, the applicant is using the property to this day. I think the, the argument of whether, you know, the split is necessary or not, I completely see the argument, and I completely agree with the side. I think, I, I think that's kind of out of the purview of this board, to be honest, because even though I may agree with you and say, I don't think the split is necessary, she's got her reasons, the applicant has their reason why they want to split, and the township ordinance does allow for lot splits and things like that. However, I do agree that because of the situation with the current property, it is being used in a practical matter right now. And the applicant has stated that the only reason, the main reason why she wants to split the property is to sell, and put another, and hope that somebody buys that and potentially puts hypothetically another single-family house on there. But does that require a practical difficulty, or show that there's a practical difficulty on that property in order to build that other thing on there? My opinion is no. So I would not be able to meet number two, just on that basis. Hopefully that made sense, and I was kind of scrambling, my mind is going faster than my mouth is, but.
No, I, I would agree with that. Ms. McKenzie, is there anything else to add about practical difficulties? Because that's, I think that's where we're, where we're all going to get hung up, and if we can't meet our five criteria, we're not able to grant the variance. But I, I do, we're all going to struggle with this practical difficulties conversation, because if, back to, back to our crystal ball, if this was a variance, let's say, you were intending to have a new building here, and it wouldn't, you know, the, we talked about the frontage and things like that, I could think of a million different scenarios where this could come to our board, and we can say, okay, we could see the practical difficulty if the house is not.
A setback issue.
A setback issue if it was a, you know, even the frontage issue, I think we could, we could, we could deal with, with, with building. But having a property that is livable, that is obviously someplace you cherish and want to keep, that's, that's where we're struggling. And I, I, we, we're struggling with that practical difficulty. Is there anything else you can give us as far as what that?
Well, I was studying the idea of practical difficulty a little bit, because I thought that would probably be important. And from what I'm understanding, it means there are unique circumstances to the site that prevent me from using the property in a way that otherwise conforms. So my argument would be that due to the narrow road frontage, as you can see, the lot itself is very wide, but that one area sort of comes to a bottleneck due to that unique circumstances created by the river and by the topography of the land there, that while the, the size of the lot is large enough in order to conform with the rules and divide it, the unique circumstances of the river created a practical difficulty to dividing it in order to use it in a way that would otherwise be within the rules. And if you don't mind, just to speak to the issue of the, the septic, which I definitely appreciate that being a concern, the lot size itself would still be sufficiently large and within the rules established. It's only the road frontage that would be narrower. So, you know, it wouldn't be affecting, the, the road frontage doesn't affect the septic, it's the overall square footage that would matter as to would there be enough land to dissipate the, the effluent, or whatever you'd like, whatever it's called. So just with regard to that, it's, it's not that the lot would be small, it's still, you know, within the, the guidelines, it's that it's more narrow. So the narrowness, I don't see how that would necessarily impact on the, the septic and well situation.
Okay.
Oh, and one more word about the practical difficulties. There seems to be kind of, you know, a gray area of like, what constitutes a practical difficulty? But one element is, will it have a negative impact financially on the owner of the property? And in this case, yes. This, not being able to divide this land will have a very dramatic negative impact on me financially, such that I won't be able to stay in my house with my children. So that for me is, you know, the reason that I need to do this, and, or am asking to do this, I should say. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're, I think, in two different spots, because the verbiage in the packet and in the application is a minimum lot width, and that, that is just in reference to the frontage, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not the lot as a whole. So what Ms. McKenzie is saying is that these lots are, as far as spatially, they're conforming, it's just frontage that would be requiring a variance.
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So frontage aside, these two, this, this split could occur and still be within the ordinance and still meet every other requirement for the RR zone. Okay. So that's interesting. Yes, Mr. Baker, come on up.
I don't want to be a stone in your shoe, but I do want to point out that section 86 dash 221-2, which prescribes, defines practical difficulty, you have to be able to find that enforcement of the ordinance would result in, and I'm quoting, "practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted use." The, what the applicant seeks is to use the property for a non-permitted use, that is, to create a new lot that does not comply with the width requirement. It is therefore not a permitted use. And so no practical difficulty has been shown. As the manual that all of you were given when you were appointed to this board provides, it's section 26, "Variances are not intended to relieve requirements of the zoning ordinance that are simply preventing applicants from doing what they wish. The zoning board was intended to serve as a safety valve in those rare circumstances where the application of the zoning requirements results in a practical difficulty." There's no practical difficulty shown here because there's no difficulty, practical difficulty, using this parcel as permitted under the ordinance. The split would create a non-permitted use. Thank you.
Yes, Member Koenig.
Just for the record, could you verify, or please confirm, the definition of practical difficulty you just read? Is that in the current, is that in the county zoning ordinance, or is that in the MML handbook?
That's in, no, that's in the ordinance itself, and it's quoted at, excuse me, lost my place. It quoted at page three. This is section 86, 221, 72, of Merton Township ordinance.
Okay, so that's, that is in the ordinance itself. Okay. I think the definition, 86 221-2 is merely a restatement of our criteria.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. There's probably a separate, as Keith said, staff, there's probably a separate section in the code that has definitions in it, I would assume.
Yes, but practical difficulty is not defined in that sense. The definition is literally, a lot of these criteria are left to be ambiguous for the board to interpret their decisions.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and that's, that is what we have spoken with, with lawyers, and been trained upon several times.
Yes.
Yeah. So we are, the frustration of Mr. Baker comes from, we have, we have, we're beating the definition of practical difficulty, you know, to death. But the simple fact is, we get to, as a board and a body, interpret what that is. And I get that you have a very strong opinion about what that is, but you are sitting on the board. So we do get to hear your opinion, but we do get to decide as a matter of coming to a conclusion as a board. So being told what the practical difficulty is or is not, it does get frustrating, because we, that is what, that is what our role here is. So.
You're being real.
Right. But I, I would, I, I'm explaining my kind of frustration, if, if I could. So I, yes, I'm still at not being able to meet the practical difficulties criteria. So with that, I would wonder if anybody has anything they would like to propose or think about, or, but at this moment, I, I cannot, I can meet criteria one. I could, with the idea that this is only going on, that this is a lot split, I can meet criteria number three as a minimum action. I can meet criteria four. I have a hard time meeting criteria two and five.
I agree, I'm stuck on the same ones, two and five.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily agree with you on one and three, but that's okay.
Okay.
I do agree with you on two and five.
So you can't meet any of them? Yes.
There's only one last thing I wanted to say about number two, because I already stated my case on that, and that is to the applicant. I did want to let you know that I'm sure everyone in this room, including all of us in this board, understand. in this board, understand your situation and understand the reason why you desire to split that lot. You know, we understand, you know, a couple of us has probably gone through that situation. However, unfortunately for the board, you know, sometimes these decisions aren't easy and in my eyes, your particular situation is not necessarily something that I believe the board takes into consideration when it comes to looking at how certain aspects of real property impact or impacted by a code. So I know that people out there, and I'm not even talking about separation, that's a total separate item, but, you know, people out there want to split lots all the time just for that reason, because they want to try to, you know, they want, they have a large lot, they want to split it, they want to get more money, that's their, their reason, their desire, and that's perfectly fine, that's their intent, that's the intent that they want to do with it. So I completely understand where you're coming from and why your intent is in wanting to split this and I, and for all intents and purposes, I'm sure we all understand your situation financially, personally, mentally, everything you're going through, we understand that. I'm still in that mindset of, you know, I, I, my eyes, I do understand what, in this situation, some other variance requests that we've had, maybe not so much, but in this situation, I understand, in my eyes, it's more clear for this particular application that there is not necessarily a practical difficulty because the owner, to this day, if, God forbid, we decide to deny this variance, the owner can still use that property at the end of the day. There's still a single family home there, it can be used. Whether they can stay in it because of their financial situation, all that, that's not for this board to determine, but overall, in my opinion, somebody could use that house, there is a single family house there without having any issues with setbacks or anything else. So therefore, that's where it goes back to Mr. or Member Trezis about, you know, is it necessary to split the lot? And regardless of whether it's necessary or not, like I said, the applicant has her reasons. I, I still see this as not necessarily, unfortunately, having a practical difficulty there, anything to do with that lot split. So if, if it were to be split, as the attorney said over there, as we all probably imagine, a single family home, more or less, is probably what's going to be built on there and not something else. So a use could be there, as of right now, it's vacant. For all intents and purposes, it's vacant, besides, there's a shed, I think, on the border that you're going to take down or want to take down, which is a structure, unfortunately, but it's a shed. But we can't, like you said, we can't speculate on what's going to be built there and when or not, so for all intents and purposes, it's going to be vacant and it can be built, built upon. It's just the issue with the frontage, but I get hung up on, is there truly a practical difficulty in there with the use of the current property the way it is now that's almost requiring this need for the variance of a split? And for this situation, unfortunately, as I said, the applicant, I do agree and understand your situation, but I, I personally, I don't see the practical difficulty with this application. It's not that I don't understand the need or the desire. So don't get me wrong with that. But I, I personally believe there is not a practical difficulty on this.
Thank you, Member Koenig, that was very well stated and that's kind of where I'm landing to. I have all the sympathy in the world. I would love to talk to you after this meeting if we could, but I don't see the, the need for, and cannot meet criteria number three and cannot meet criteria number five for sure, I know Member Trezis can't meet any of our criteria, but if we can't meet our five criteria, we can't grant the variance. That said, I know that if this was in nearly any other place in Merton Township, other than maybe Lake Lansing, that lot split would be able to, to happen and would, you know, be able to, you know, give her that financial security, but it is just the, to me, again, going back to criteria number one, the uniqueness of this, of this lot and the circumstance and where it is, is actually a, is maybe more of the problem for you because it's, it's, it, this is a tricky one to meet the practical difficulty. So, yeah, I am, I'm, I'm not able to find the practical difficulty that would, would allow me to grant this, this variance. So I would motion to deny this variance based on not being able to meet criteria number two and five for myself.
I would support that motion.
Supported by Member Trezis. All right. Shall we vote, gentlemen? All right. This is a vote to deny the variance application for Zoning Board of Appeals, case number 23-11, 715 Red Cedar. Member Bennett?
Yes.
And vice chair Koenig?
Yes.
And Member Trezis?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So unfortunately, this variance has been denied. Again, we, as, as Member Koenig very eloquently said, we, I, this, this is hard for me to deny because I wa, I would become a rubber person to stretch out and try to find the practical difficulties here and I do hope that you can find a different solution that will allow you and your family to stay in the home. But unfortunately, with this variance, we just could not meet the criteria. So with that said, I'm going to go back to our agenda and take a look and see here. We do not have any other business and so I'm going ahead and close our board time and open the floor for public remarks. If anybody would like to come up to the podium and speak on public remarks, you're welcome too.
Question for staff.
Okay.
I never asked this before, Keith, and I meant to ask, the public remarks in number eight, is that for any, can, can the public speak on anything, including something on the agenda?
Correct, yeah, yep.
Okay.
Floor is wide open.
Some areas have like a public remark at the beginning for only agenda items and one at the end where it's not agenda items.
Yeah.
Whereas it's different, so I'm not.
Bylaws aren't strict on.
Gotcha, perfect, okay, I got to remember that.
Although in, in all honesty, I don't think we've had anybody other than to speak about a case that we were actively discussing during that meeting.
Right.
I've never had a, a rogue, a public comment.
Right, but I've no, I've never, I've never known how strict I should have asked.
Even in the Zoom days, we didn't have any weird public remarks.
We had a lot more public involvement.
Yeah, that's true. There was a lot, those Zoom days were wild. All right, I will go ahead and close public remarks and I want to open this to board member comments, if we have any. We'll just say happy, happy holidays and happy new year to all of you and.
See you in January.
See you in January, right? All right. On that note, this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.